Bartel.
Here.
Canada.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you have given each and every one here. Be with this council, dear Heavenly Father, that the decisions you made will be for the better of the community. Be with the ones in our city, dear Heavenly Father, that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick. Be with the caregivers. Be with the ones that sits on this council, dear Heavenly Father, that have illnesses guiding direct their lives. Be with our armed service personnel, not all on foreign ground, but here in the United States, guiding direct their lives and bringing them safely home to their families. Ask in not precious name. Amen. Need a motion to approve events of the seven eleven sixteen meeting. Motion by Mr. Hall. Second by Mr. McManus. Paula Rourke, please.
Bartel.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you.
One behind.
First item on the agenda, citizens' request.
Yes, I bear with me it's been a minute since your public speaking, so. My name is Melissa Smith, and I'm speaking with you guys tonight on behalf of a significant number of our citizens in support of the current Metropolis Airport manager, Bo Woods. And our reason, our reason, like outside where it's finally eleven, nine two hundred and thirty-seven degrees, but that won't take up too much of your time. I don't know how involved the council has been up to this point, so I'm not sure how familiar you are with Bo or his contract. He signed a one-year contract with the City of Metropolis as the manager of the Metropolis Airport in, on the first of August in July, or, end of July first of two thousand and fifteen. At that time, if there was no intent to terminate by either party, the contractor said to automatically renew, which it did. His second term will end here in just a few days on August the thirty-first this year. But last Wednesday, we received a letter stating that the city did not wish to renew his contract for another year and to go on, say, that he needed to add himself and all his personal property off the premises by obviously thirty-first. So Bo was a little surprised and a lot heartbroken because he loves that place. And he's worked his heart and soul into it for the last two years. I mean, I'm really not sure anyone even realizes how much work Bo's done out there. I mean, he really has done a lot. So at the very least, you know, these efforts won't go unnoticed and at best, it won't take away his livelihood. I mean, obviously, it's his first time he's ever managed an airport, but he enrolled in the Air Force when he was seventeen years old. He was a aeromedical evacuation technician, which means, you know, he's the guy that dropped into battle zones and helped get the guys that were hurt out. He got home from a tour in Iraq and Afghanistan. He went to the airport and got his private pilot's license. And in the ten years since, he's been at the airport every free minute he's got, you know? So he really thought he had a handle on it when he was offered this position. But he was still not ready. I mean, I'm not going to go into all the gory details, but the airport was kind of a mess. I mean, it was obvious that it had been neglected in a lot of ways for years, if not decades. I mean, not only from a physical perspective, but an operational standpoint as well. I mean, when he was trained, his predecessor, who he thinks the world of, was simply, you know, "I'll be here, I've got some packages coming, I'll be here to get them. Here's keys, and feel pretty calm if there's any questions." But questions was kind of all Bo had. Questions, and a mess, and a fire marshal, who inspected him on that very first day and dropped a nice long list of violations in his lap. So he's already, you know, feeling a little bit overwhelmed, but he decided all he could do was suck it up and figure it out. And so he didn't. And he did research, he took classes, he got certifications, he tracked down paperwork, and he asked all them questions, and he managed to take care of those violations. But then the real work started. I don't know, it's a lot of information, and it's a lot of details. I know you guys don't have that kind of time to spend here, so I've made some information sheets for you guys that you can look at, you know, at your convenience. That way, you don't have to mess them now. And I encourage you to go online and look at the airport's Facebook page. There's a lot of pictures and stuff, some of the improvements and things that's been going on out there. And I really think you'll be surprised. I mean, most of what he started out, you know, he started out simple, posting his contact information so that he was easily reachable. And creating an email and Facebook page so that he could build and maintain relationships with the aviation community. But there was things that were more difficult. You know, he fired coordinating agencies like the Federal Aviation Administration, the Illinois Department of Human or Natural Resources, even the Department of Defense, the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Aeronautics. I mean, and that doesn't even touch the sheer physical labor. He had an ADS-B flight tracker installed so that he could help assist the Department of Defense and the FAA in tracking and recording information on civilian and military air traffic. He also coordinated with the Illinois Department of Transportation to evaluate the risk posed by animals on the runway. And went on from there with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to get certified in their wildlife mitigation, hazardous wildlife mediation program, so that he was able to control that population, to ensure the safety of every single person that flies into or out of Metropolis Municipal Airport. I mean, he immediately had to oversee a project, a major construction project, to expand his access away and some other things. And that's not even including the equipment update, reports to submit, procedures to learn. You want to talk about some rules and regulations? I mean, does anybody know the buffer zone for corn and soybeans? He didn't when he was contacted by a citizen with that question, but he found out and any other agricultural information that's pertinent to running an airport. He's truly dedicated himself to seeing that airport reach its full potential, not only as a general aviation facility, but as the asset to this community he'll compete. I mean, if you look at some of the goals he has for his place, it involves getting, you know, in sync with this community, there's an asset there that's not being had. So his question ends why? You know, in his contract, it states that if there's any issues with his performance or any complaints that he can be notified in writing, he would have a fifteen-day window to correct those problems. But in two years, he's not received one written, discipline, no written correspondence saying there was an issue. And who's going to replace him? I mean, I don't even know that his predecessor was required to be certified in the things that he is now or in the performance of these duties. So who's going to train the new person? I mean, and who's willing to do it for twelve hundred and forty-six dollars a month, which is what it is? I mean, let's face it, he's not in this for money. He's in it for the love. He loves that airport. I mean, twelve hundred and forty-six dollars a month is a hidden, and it's kind of ridiculous if he were to work, if he were... If he works for fifty-four hours a week, provided by his contract, he makes five hundred, five dollars and seventy-six cents an hour. Bo usually puts in upwards of ninety dollars a week. So I mean, think about what he's making. And think about what that saves the city in wages, not to mention labor. That storm that blew through a couple weeks ago and did so much damage, tore a wall, looks from the hangar. This wall is thirteen feet tall and seventy feet long, and all of the less supporting it with a beam on either end, which is also holding the trusses that hold the roof. But he thought it through and he figured it out, engineered a tool to help him out, and he fixed it by himself, saving who knows how much money? I mean, when he asked the mayor, you know, why he's not being there, the mayor told me he simply not what he wanted out there. But my question is, what do we want? And what is this divided based on? Because as far as I can tell, nobody's really sure what's been done and what's gone on out there because, you know, nobody's been out there, nobody's gotten involved. I mean, it's obvious the mayor is very insomniac, and it's hard to cover all the bases. So things can slip through the cracks, which is probably the case of the airport. But, you know, when the mayor asked Bo on location, who authorized him to have the area in front of the hangars paved? Mayor did. It was part of a large construction contract federally funded and was signed personally by the mayor long before Bo came on the scene. I mean, it's just, like I said, it's easy to see that people get busy, things fall through. So even if he has been, or the replacement is found, you know, he's not been asked to train anybody. So is that person going to be willing to work so hard for so little? And if so, are they going to apply in too? Because are they going to know what reports need to be submitted, what inspections need to be performed, and how and when? I mean, it's not likely. It's, Bo does it because he loves that place. It's very unlikely anyone else would. And quite frankly, we feel like if you force Bo to walk away now, you're basically throwing the airport to the wolves because you're not going to find anybody else that's going to run it for such a ridiculously low amount of money that has the dedication to you and the love for that airport that Bo does. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Any other citizen requests?
I'm going to call another head secretary. I am going to present the tourism budget for this fiscal year. No, it will fall in under your general budget, but I wanted to go ahead and explain where our stuff is falling in on this. So I know that you all have a budget being scheduled for the third, but if you have any questions about anything, here's where the CBD is budgeting the hotel motel tax money. Trish had sent me this back in old mid archery tournament, I think, late one night. I was working on that, and she sent me this and said, "Five hundred thousand seems to be what we're anticipating for this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Make a budget for that." So we did. And this is it. And you can see this year, I did it a little differently where I broke it out into percentages. So you guys can see exactly how the money is being spent. Every dime is going to be accounted for. I'm very particular, you can ask Mr. Bartel in our meetings. I'm very particular on accountability and where every dime is going and how every dime is spent. And I want to see how everything is being spent, and I'm sure you all want to know that as well. So you can see how everything is being broken out. Very, very, very happy to say that seventy-nine point thirty-two percent of the transient hotel motel tax will be being spent on promoting education and advancing tourism in Metropolis. Very, very small amount will be spent on labor, payroll, that sort of thing. Actually, a lot less than last year. Eighty-six thousand was budgeted last year for labor, was able to take that down to seventy-one thousand, and that still includes salary, part-time help, and internships and different things like that. Office last year was budgeted at thirty-nine thousand. I took that down drastically to fourteen thousand. So did a lot of cutting, a lot of saving there so that we could shift it over into actually marketing campaign. That's our job. That's what we're supposed to do. So that's where it's all going. You can see on that second page, if you flip it over, the large percentage of the hotel motel tax, forty-eight point six percent, goes into promoting and producing archery major events. Superman celebration, archery tournament, encampment. That's forty-eight point six percent of the budget right there. So, you know, as we progress and as we go forward, the hotels are always coming up saying, "When are we going to add more events? When are we going to do more things?" That's going to be where we look at. We've got to add, you know, we've got to increase the stays for these three events to grow the tax base so that we can add more events in to keep that going. And that's the goal. And that's why we're promoting and going to keep pushing to get that tax base. I think when I was here before, we were working with about six hundred and fifty thousand. You can see we're down about a hundred and fifty thousand right now several years later. So we've got to get it back up. We're up to five hundred thousand. Next stop was a million, so. So if you guys want to take a look at that, have any questions, you can always call me. But that's it. You all know where to find me. Any questions now? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Thank you, Trish. As you saw in your package, you actually have a letter in there of resignation from Mr. Joe Hobbs, which actually, Joe and Bonnie have actually moved out of the area. Bonnie has just retired. They moved back to Tennessee. So he has turned in his resignation from the library. The library at this time has not brought back a name for a replacement onto that board. Now, I did meet with the chairman of the board, and he actually submitted about three or four names. I went through them. I told him that that would be a decision of their own, you know, even though it is in the mayor's process to make those appointments, but I've always felt like the library should make their appointments unless there's something that we don't know. And they were going to be bringing a name back probably within the next week or two weeks, probably before the next council meeting. Joe Hobbs was a very, very good library board member. He was a gentleman and very easy to get along with, so Joe will be missed down there. So until we have something else to make an appointment on, we are accepting his resignation. Next item. Update on Uptown Improvements. As, there was a copy of some things on the Uptown District. If you remember, probably about, probably a year ago, something like that, year and a half maybe, through the tourism, City Council, Metropolis Planet, several real estate companies, and the Chamber of Commerce. We actually had some joint meetings about the Uptown District and the vacated buildings up there. And put together a pros, you know, a program where that, we did some advertisement, we paid for some advertisements. The Planet graciously donated quite a bit of advertisement. Probably, I know they, they furnished more than we bought. Some pamphlets provided through the tourism. We actually had an open house process up there of Uptown, Downtown. And it was very successful. We actually know that we sold at least three buildings. Most of them come within just a matter of weeks after those open houses. And even today, there's still some of those pending, some financial restrains for the parties that were interested. And so through some conversation through the tourism, Chamber of Commerce, and the people involved in that, we are, would like to have another joint meeting with that group and go out just a little bit further into the Uptown District. And actually, with some money that will be appropriated through the budget of this year, and maybe some contributions from the Tourism Committee, actually set aside some, I want to call it streetscape. It's not going to put roofs on and things of that nature, but rather, an application form has already been established. It'll work kind of like our CDAP loan, except this won't be a loan. It'll be a grant. And all the details are not worked out yet, so we're going to need input. But it could be as simple as we want to be able to go up to the Uptown District and the Lower Town District and actually see something visible that that money is being spent for. Maybe it's a sign. Maybe it's the painting of the facade on the front of your building. They put, the property owner puts up a certain amount of that money. We maybe match it or a percentage of that. That we can actually go up there in a given time and see what your money is going for. And I don't want to, I don't want to bore you and get into a lot of stuff. All of it has not been decided. So when we have these meetings, of course, anybody on the City Council is more than welcome to attend those meetings, but everything will come back here to the City Council in a form of an ordinance that actually states what this is. I think this could be a good thing. Right now, there is quite a bit of movement on the Uptown, Lower Town. I know there's three buildings up there right now that are under construction, redoing the inside. But right now, we're kind of lacking on the outside appearance. You know, whether it be, I know one of the buildings that's being worked on, windows broke out, some actual paint, you know, and things of that nature. So we put that in there. I've already talked to the Metropolis Planet about it. Mr. Abel has talked to Ms. Deckerreiter in a, you know, just kicking it around. So they're willing to contribute and match whatever we decide we want to put in the budget for, something like that. As we speak, I know of three people that are still looking for properties up there. And one of them, I just now remembered, Ed Hasold, local, brand-new business person, never been in, in the retail-type business before in their lives. But they are kind of excited. It'll be a unique novelty-type store. Right now, that seems like that is kind of a niche that is kind of proceeding in that Uptown District right there. I will say this, in the summertime, of course, we struggle a little bit in the wintertime. Every business up there does, because you don't have that out-of-town tourism. But in any given Saturday through the summer, you can go up there and there's just a considerable amount of traffic up and down the street all day long. So it has give the people uptown the initiative. I think they see the traffic, you know, so they're excited about it. We have not talked to all of them about this. We have mentioned it to two or three. They're very excited about this program in there. The first one, I mean, you can't believe the people that were up there, they were appreciative of city and City Council in able to put that program on. So of course, the real estate people benefit from it, you know? They're selling a lot of the property and stuff like that. So I did copy that to you. I want you to look at it. Let us know what you think about it, and then we'll move forward with that. Got a question, Mr. Gayle?
When our sidewalks up there, when was the last time we resealed those? Is it getting close to time redoing those? Because I looked at them the other day up there and I thought, well, we might be getting pretty close.
We tried to figure out a way to actually put a different coating on it. But then you get into the thing with the slipping and the freezing and stuff like that. The last guy we had come in actually told us not to do anything to them. They make a sealant for that up there. But it is a composite-type thing, and it, it actually has a little glaze to it, but it really freezes bad, terribly bad. So we kind of, we've tried to sw, you know, we, we've actually pressure washed them, and it probably needs to be done again. You know, and we have the pressure washers to do that with, but we need something that's not glossy, that actually has a dull, flat finish to it, you know? But it's been several years.
Yeah, it was like, I remember we did that contract, it was out of Kentucky, and I don't remember if it was your first term or your second term, but somewhere in that time.
There were several thousands of dollars.
Same term?
Yeah. It's probably in, you know, two thousand eight, nine, ten, something like that.
Nine, ten, somewhere around there, outside of your right, dude. Been a while.
Now, like I said, it does help if they, if they pressure wash them and things like that. Maybe that's, maybe we try that again. I've called every, every paint company that I can think of, and there is just nothing there that they say that's, that's a stain of some kind, you know? And...
Kind of they make it feel where it goes in it, where it makes it rough, but it's hard to make it uniform.
Well, really, that's the second time those have been done. If you remember the first time, they actually had a stamp that actually stamped into that wet concrete. That was, I mean, we had more people slipping, falling, whatever, and then we went over and resealed those. And this is what they recommended and stuff like that. It holds up good, it stains pretty bad, but we can actually, let's see what we can do with the washing. If not, we'll tackle it some other way. I wish we could just find some kind of paint that was, you could go for a paint, you know? But if you come across anything that is recommendable, would be sure to let us know.
Most of that paint, though, you need an acid cleaner first.
You have to. Because it won't stick on, it'll just flake off. So anyway, that was supposed to be the, that was supposed to be the saving grace for the stamped ones, and it, it has been good, you know? It's not a tripping hazard and stuff like that, at least. So that's all I have under the mayor's report, except to say that we are going to have a finance meeting on August the third at one o'clock. There may be something else that is tied in with that. I don't know if we'll need a waterline street or ordinance or anything. It does come up sometime altogether, and I can do it one day. But we are going to have, we need a finance meeting, go with the budget. Next item, corporate council report.
Thank you, Mayor. The first time I'm on here, in your packets, if you recall, probably been a month or so ago now, we had talked about buying a new bucket truck for the light department. And we had looked at the possibility of leasing that bucket truck, because we could lease it at a cost of about one point three percent interest rate for five years. And so we got the lease, I went over the lease, I talked to Stoney, I've sent Trish stuff that she needs to know about the lease, everything. It's a very normal-type lease with Altech Capital. And, but in order for us to enter into a multi-year lease, we have to do it by ordinance. And we have to, actually, once we adopt the ordinance, the ordinance can't go into effect until we publish this notice in the paper. Because a multi-year lease is kind of like a multi-year purchase agreement. It's kind of like a multi-year bond, if you will. It creates a debt that extends beyond your current fiscal year. So you put a notice in the paper, and it's basically, it's what they call subject to a backdoor referendum. If you print the notice twice, you print the ordinance twice, you wait thirty days from the second publication. If nobody files a petition asking for a referendum, then the ordinance takes effect. Basically, then you sign the lease and you go forward. We've done this before. It used to be out there, before we bought Production Press, we used to lease Production Press. We had to do the same thing every year when we leased that building. We've done it, I'm trying to think, there's been a couple others we've done since I've been here, because that's what I use for this. But essentially, to move this forward, assuming this is how we want to still do this, then we'll need to suspend the rules tonight, place this ordinance, which I think is two thousand sixteen dash seven, which would authorize us to enter into the lease. And then if we adopt that, like I say, there's a notice, I think I included in your packets, it goes in the paper. I've already given the notice to the paper, and I'll give a re of the copy of the ordinance if we pass it tonight. And then it'll, it'll run this week and next week, and then we'll wait thirty days and probably do the lease. The lease itself, see, was a very, it's what you call a fully amortizing lease. So basically, at the end of it, you buy the property for a dollar, is what it amounts to.
And what, is your amount on the lease?
It's like forty-one thou, forty-one thousand and change per year. It worked, you could buy the thing outright, Mr. Mizell, if I remember, and I don't have my folder in front of me, but roughly for a hundred and ninety-one thousand. But if you paid it out over five years, it was like two hundred and four thousand. There's about thirteen thousand dollars in interest over five years, is what it amounts to.
During that lease, they'll...
They maintain it on-site.
They come, they come here and check it, because you have to, you have to keep it to certain standards, because if you were to turn it back in, it has to meet certain standards. Now, the reality is, if it's a decent bucket truck, you're not going to turn it in after five years, because it's got a good ten-year lifespan to it at least.
Is this a, is this a new truck?
Yeah, it's brand-new.
Yeah, it's a, it's a demo, but it is an ABS.
And they do, one of the good things about it, they do come on-site to do their inspections and maintenance and types of that nature. to do their inspections and maintenance and types of that nature.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance of the rest of the lease with options for personal property performance passage.
Motion made by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Short. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt two thousand sixteen dash seven.
We do have a motion. We do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Next item.
Mayor, I've got one more, if that's okay. I apologize.
It sure is.
The, if you remember, at the beginning of the summer, we were talking about our nuisance abatement, our weeds and our problems we have with garbage and debris. And we felt like we needed probably, we've stepped up our enforcement efforts, I think. But we've also wanted to look at our ordinance and maybe revise it. And it's taken a while, but I have rewritten the entire chapter. I know we'll want to send this out to an ordinance committee, but I want you to have it ahead of time so that you can be prepared when we call that ordinance committee, like Mr. Short does, to go through with this. What I'm handing you, the way I'm handing this out, the way I've done this, is essentially this is, would be a new chapter in your code book, replace the existing chapter. When we get around to adopting it, we'll have an ordinance that simply says we adopt. Take out, we delete our old chapter and we replace it with this new chapter. And there's a few other sections of our code that we'll have to modify. I got this by using a composition of several other cities. I used some from Karnak. Mr. Short provided me a lot of their information. I used quite a bit from the city of Quincy, which had a very detailed ordinance. I used some from the city of Flora, and I salvaged some from ours as well. So it's probably a combination of about four different towns. And if anything else, it contains a whole lot more of what is a nuisance now than it used to be. It's not, we've got very strong, I think, definitions of what will be a nuisance. We've put, come to one thing that we've had a problem with in the past, and I don't think we always recognize, we had nuisance provisions in a whole bunch of different chapters, okay? Stagnant water was in one chapter. Buildings and structures was in another chapter. Garbage was in a chapter, and then it was also in ninety-five. And they weren't always consistent. So the idea here is to get it all in one location, make it as broad as possible, and take care of it all in one place where our officers can say, here it is. We can write the ticket if we need to, or we can send the citation or the notice to abate based on this. And the next thing we'll do is we'll actively revise our forms according to. So, but I just want to get that out tonight and give you a chance to study that ahead.
Now, that's all ahead. All right. Mr. Short, if you, it's your wishes, we can actually put that on the third if you want to. You be ready for that.
All right.
We've got to read that.
To the fore.
You've got to digest all that. All right. Moving on. Committee reports. Waterline Street, Mr. Barfield.
Mr. Mayor, these items were taken from the July thirteenth Waterline Street Committee meeting. They were thoroughly discussed and voted on and bring forth a full council. I will make a motion on the following. I will make a motion to accept payment number one to HMG Constructors for the Influent Screen Replacement in the Water Treatment Plant in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second. Motion by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to proceed on phase two at the water treatment plant. Just to change from class A to class B.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the payment number four for the Intercept Rehabilitation Project in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand and thirty-three dollars plus fifty cents.
Second.
To visu-sir.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus.
Question. Did they get the last manhole done? Did they get the last manhole done?
It should be this week.
This week?
They should arrive at their factory this week, and they're going to come down here installing.
Yeah, they had to order it.
We do have a motion. We do have a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I make the motion to accept a blanket purchase order to Brentag in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars for July two thousand sixteen through June two thousand seventeen for sodium hypochlorite and sodium bisulfate at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of two D-Unit fires for a water treatment plant in the amount of six thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars from Sylvain.
Second.
All this money is coming out before the board.
Yeah.
It's coming out of tourism.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept truck testing for the light department in the approximate amount of three thousand and thirty-five hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
And Short.
Yes.
Sorry, these new names.
There's only one, maybe.
Well, I'm missing one in this one.
Then he did one in last year, didn't he?
Okay, he did. He did.
Mayor, I can base one on that street report.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Department heads.
Frank. Nothing at this time, Mayor. Is anybody else here?
It's just you.
Old business. New business. Miscellaneous reports. Financial reports. Payment of salaries, payroll, contract bills.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Barfield. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Here.
He is better.
Hall.
There.
McGuire.
I'm so confused.
What's your name?
I don't know.
You're wearing car rentals. McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
We got that all cleared up.
Yeah.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
Second.
We do have a motion by Mr. McManus, and second by Mr. Barfield. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
I'm a saving painter, being the old one, and that's what we're doing with that one.
We do have the need to go into closed session for reasons listed. Personnel.
Yeah, I briefly mentioned pending, usually collect the bargain.
Collected bargaining and pending litigation.
Yeah, I think we'll go closed session. We're having to listen.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.